Good evening. It's 6:32 on Tuesday, January 29th. I'd like to call the meeting of the Harwich Planning Board together to order. As always, we have a recording and taping notification. We're required by law, and the town may audio or video record this proceeding. Anyone intending to either audio or video record is required to inform the Chair. Is anyone recording? All of you in the audience, just so you know, this isn't church. You can move up if you'd like. We're not going to bite. So, a couple of things. From an order viewpoint, if you care to speak, all we ask is you're welcome. We'll do it in order. You head up to the podium, or you sit here. Let everybody know your name and where you live, and then speak your piece. Okay? So, tonight, we have a public hearing. We've got two issues. The first is PB 2018-39. John B. Robey, trustee, Robey Mill Road nominee, care of William Crowell. Seek approval of a special use permit with waivers pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-13, Table 1, Use Regulations, and Section 325-14.Q for a detached residential accessory structure with two bedrooms. Property located at 24 Mill Road, MAP 15, parcel U-19, in the R-L zoning district. Mr. Crowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell from Harwich Port. Good evening. And this is John Robey with me, and his wife Jennifer is seated behind us. And they are seeking a special permit for a detached residential accessory building with two bedrooms. We've seen the staff report. The Robeys are comfortable with one bedroom as opposed to two bedrooms. They're -- they have a six-bedroom septic system as it stands now, and they understand the Board of Health's comments. If you haven't seen them already, the Board of Health thinks that there are five bedrooms in the main house. And so, they are willing to concede that point at the present time, and know that they could either make it a seven-bedroom compliant septic, or they could do something about the study that's in the house. They call it the "study." The Board of Health, of course, calls it a bedroom. So, they're fine with a condition that there be only one bedroom above the garage. So, they're seeking a special permit for a detached residential accessory building with only one bedroom above, as per the plans by Moran Engineering and the building and elevation plans by Campbell Smith Architects that were submitted. Their position is that the accessory structure, which is allowed by special permit under the bylaw, would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, that there would be no significant or substantial increase in noise, traffic, fumes, odors, congestion, or the like. And would ask that the Board grant the request for the special permit this evening, in that they, other than the bedroom issue, they otherwise comply, in their opinion, with all the requirements of the special permit criteria for a detached accessory structure pursuant to the bylaw. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Charlene?
And I'm going to apologize. I have a cough drop in my mouth, so. In light of what Attorney Crowell just said, the plan that was submitted does show two bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
If the Board is still comfortable with the wording that I had suggested as a condition, which states until such time as the septic is upgraded for Board of Health -- for the Health Department to accommodate two bedrooms, only one bedroom will be allowed in the accessory structure. That would allow him, in the future, if he wanted to put the second bedroom in, that he could. If it is only going to be for one bedroom, we would need a revised plan. So, we can talk about that. Engineering was concerned -- concern is stormwater runoff from the site to neighboring properties. If the new drive and parking area are paved, the town engineer would suggest pitching the paved area 1% to the south into a swale constructed to the south side of the paved area. If the drive and parking area is stone or gravel, runoff should not be an issue. The town engineer would also suggest that the rain leaders from the accessory building be discharged into a shallow infiltration chamber or plastic storm tech-type chamber. So, in other words, gutters to downspouts into something.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the petitioners don't -- do not plan to pave
Perfect.
the driveway, so there should not be any issue with stormwater runoff to the neighbors.
Just gravel.
Possibly shells.
Shells, yeah.
Conservation had no comments. Health Department, as was explained -- I won't read this whole thing, but essentially, the septic system is designed for seven bedrooms -- or, excuse me, for six bedrooms.
Six bedrooms.
This with two bedrooms would kick it up to seven.
Yeah.
And the Water Department, no water service, as shown on the plan. Existing service was cut and capped back in October. That's because they did a tear-down rebuild on the property. So, they would have to go back to the Water Department. Regarding my comments, as noted on the Health Department comments, an upgrade to the septic system would be required to accommodate two bedrooms. Therefore, I made the recommendation of the condition that I already read. Additionally, the Health Department comments on the apartment, if the applicant seeks to have an apartment, they would need to further have relief from the bylaw, from the planning board or the zoning Board of Appeals, unless you move forward tonight and things get approved at town meeting.
Yeah.
The floor plan for the accessory apartment shows no kitchen. The structure will need to tie into the town water, per the Water Department. The waivers that have been requested are reasonable, and at this time, it does appear that all requirements -- other requirements have been met.
Okay. Anything else? Charlene?
I have nothing.
Any comments from the Planning Board? Anybody on the Board have any questions or concerns?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Just to clarify, there's no drain in the floor of the accessory building that we're talking about?
No, there's none.
Okay. And there is a heating source in there. I assume it'd be on the garage level?
Yeah, most likely, I'll do a split system, so it'll be electric heat pump probably on the garage level as well as the upper level.
Okay. And this is a question, the setback -- the side setback shows 20.3, and it's hard for me to tell from the drawing if that -- and there's a one-foot overhang. So, is the 20.3 to the edge of the one-foot overhang, or is it to the -- I don't know how architects measure that.
It's showing to the edge of the overhang.
It's to the edge of the overhang.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And I think you mentioned that the main house is currently planned for five bedrooms. One is used as a study, or is it possible that if there are then only four bedrooms in the main house, two -- you might choose to put two in the accessory, and we still comply with the current septic?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to respond to that. Again, if -- they have to comply with the Board of Health. So, if the Board is comfortable with issuing the special permit for a two-bedroom with the understanding that they can only have one bedroom, and this isn't something that can slip through the cracks, this will be, you know, looked at carefully
Written down somewhere.
through the permitting process, because they're going to have to do a revised floor plan for the one bedroom to satisfy the Health Department before they can get their building permit issued. But in the event that they can expand their septic system and want to expand their septic system, then they could revert back to the two-bedroom.
Right. Or, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sir.
Or if they could make the study into a study.
Exactly. However they need to.
Opening -- widen the opening.
I keep pointing to Katie, because Katie actually works in the Health Department, so.
Widen the opening enough so that the Board of Health's comfortable that it's no longer a bedroom.
Exactly. As long as they can satisfy the Board of Health.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's a good segue about -- oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, please, go ahead.
About the septic, is there space currently -- I see one septic tank, and I assume that if it were to get to the point where you needed to add on to comply with the Board of Health requirements, I don't know if it would mean a new septic tank or a different -- a larger one, but I assume there's future space planning.
Yeah, I had the engineer look at it, and the leaching field would have to be expanded.
Okay.
The problem with that is, quite frankly, there's a tree in front of the house that I don't want to remove, but it would probably kill the tree.
The dog would.
And the other thing is that the space over the garage is relatively small, and we were going back and forth whether we wanted one big open room anyway, so we don't really see that as a big deal.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. That's all I had. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments or concerns?
Sure. Joe?
Seems to me, Mr. Chairman, that we have to make a finding of one bedroom, and if at some future date they get the bathroom business straightened out, they'd have to come back. That's the way I see it. I don't think we can vote two bedrooms. Am I right?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I believe you can. At this time, though, the Board of Health is only going to allow them to do one bedroom until they rectify the situation with the septic.
I am, for one, not comfortable voting two bedrooms if they're not legally authorized for two bedrooms. I think we can only vote what
Yeah.
what they're legally authorized to have. And if they get the septic issues and so forth straightened out, I suppose that means you've got to pay your lawyer a second time, but you come back for a second time?
I think -- I'm more comfortable -- I mean, I understand your concern, Mr. McPhee, and I was okay with Charlene's condition that she recites in her planning staff comments, that you could approve it for two bedrooms until -- but until such time as the septic system, which is a Board of Health issue
Yeah.
is upgraded to accommodate the two bedrooms, that only one bedroom would be allowed.
Charlene?
Yes?
Would you, just for the record, would you point out where your comment is?
It's not there.
It's not -- or is it?
There's two -- it's in my planning staff comments on page two. It's item number one.
Yeah.
And then additionally, on page three, in recommended conditions, it's item number two.
And this is -- and this document is not the one that we were mailed, correct? This? Or is it?
Yeah.
That's it.
I'll show you.
Right here. This one. Right here.
That's a proposed condition for us.
Yeah.
If we go forward and allow the --
Joe?
I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm really not. I mean, what you can do now is have one bedroom.
Yeah.
At some given time in the future, you get the septic straightened out, and it's not straightening out, it's just going to be completed, I guess, is what has to happen.
Yeah.
You come back in, we'll give you the other bedroom. And I'm not -- it's not that I'm hung up about one bedroom or two bedroom. I don't think we can, at this time, give you two bedrooms because of the conditions spelled out here. That's my reaction.
Okay. Mary, please.
Through you, too, Charlene.
Yes, sir.
Could you -- could you give us a little clarification on what the application process they'd have to go through in the Building Department in order to kind of go past here?
They will be making an application for the accessory structure.
Mm-hmm.
They will have to show the floor plans for that. It will be reviewed -- I review it, and I will look and see, because it was conditioned -- if it's conditioned to only one bedroom, or if it's approved for only one bedroom, I will look at the plan to see -- to ensure that it is only one bedroom. It then goes to the Health Department. They do the same thing. They ensure that it's only one bedroom. Then it goes to the Fire Department, and then it goes to the Building Department for their review and issuance of the building permit, and it would be, at that point, conditioned also to one bedroom.
This would be their application for a building permit?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, on that, I think the petitioner's comfortable
Yeah.
with that restriction of one bedroom.
It seems to me I'm not going to get a building permit for two bedrooms anyway, so.
You're -- they want --
If the procedure is --
That's my whole point.
Yeah, that's fine. So, if the procedure is to get the one bedroom, I really don't know if I have any intent to go to a second one anyway, so I'm more than happy to come back and --
Just be a big bedroom.
That's what he and I discussed earlier, it'd be one big bedroom.
Mr. Chairman, it's David.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
On the drawings on A2, it shows the floor plan. If they were to eliminate the bedrooms, would that satisfy the problem for the moment with the language that you have in the -- did Charlie put in the motion, the item two?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, it would still be counted as a bedroom under the Board of Health regulations.
Yeah.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, what we're looking for is a vote tonight, not a continuance, that we have to come back with a revised plan. We want to walk out with the special permit, if we can. One bedroom. Go through the application process and get the building permit. If we want two bedrooms later on, we --
You know.
Not bureaucratic efficiency, but we'll come back a second time.
If you have to.
If he has to pay me, he has to pay me.
In the spirit of generosity.
No, I happen to be in the same business.
I appreciate you --
It has nothing to do with --
I know.
It has nothing to do with full employment for lawyers.
I'm sure he'll give me a discount.
There you go.
I think what we have here really is something that is noted, and it's by the Health Department, and I think it's our job to make sure that we're sticking to the rules. So, believe me, I think all of us understand what you're doing and how you're doing it, but at the same time, if it's -- if the septic system is designed for six, then seven just isn't acceptable. So, as long as you understand that, as long as there's one bedroom, and the total is six, including the study as a bedroom, then I don't know if there's any more discussion that we need to have, or --
I would just point out, then, on the -- on the motion to approve the conditions, that I did provide that you are not going to want to read condition number two, and that in the bulk of the language up above, you would want to say use --
Change it from one, two to one.
Get rid of number two. So, it would go one, three, four, five.
Yeah, just strike.
I got you.
But then up above
Mm-hmm.
where it says the motion to approve, you would want to say for a detached residential accessory structure with one bedroom.
I've already made that change.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Charlene, do we need to condition it on revised plans?
In the process of them going to the Building Department, I will get a revised plan.
Okay.
But if you want to condition it that they do a revised plan, that whatever the Board's comfortable with.
Just asking what your pleasure is.
Yeah. So, do we move to vote?
Do you want to open it?
Is there anybody -- sorry. I'm trying to move ahead here. Anybody from the audience that would like to speak up or comment on this matter? Anyone? Okay. Move to vote?
They're going to close the public hearing.
All right.
And roll call vote.
Public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have to take a vote by roll call. David?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Move to approve waivers of any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this petition.
Second.
Okay. Vote by roll call. David?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to vote, the following findings affect: One, the property is located within the R-L zoning district. Two, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, the site is in appropriate location for such use. Four, the accessory structure will not contain a kitchen, and therefore is not an accessory apartment, as defined in 325-2. Word uses in definitions dwelling, single-family with accessory apartment. Five, the proposed parking area will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements of the town code, and as such, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Second.
Vote by roll call. David?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Yeah, aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Now, motion to approve with conditions, the use special permit and waivers for PB 2018-39. John B. Robey Jr., trustee of the Robey Mill Road Nominee Trust, care of William Crowell Esquire, for a use special permit pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, 325-13, Table 1, Use Regulations, and 325-14-Q for a detached residential accessory structure with up to one bedroom. The property is located at 24 Mill Road, MAP 15, parcel U-19, in the RL zoning district. The approval is based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements or criteria for approval pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich with the above findings and following conditions. One, the accessory structure does not contain a kitchen and therefore is not an accessory apartment pursuant to 325-2, word usage in definitions dwelling, single-family with accessory apartment. Two, the accessory structure shall comply with the Harwich Water Department requirements. Three, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Four, any changes to the plan will be subject to further planning board review.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. By roll call vote, David?
Clarification. In the first paragraph was asked, was up to one bedroom or with one bedroom?
It says --
Wait a minute. I go back and look at my notes.
It says up to one bedroom.
And that's what I must have said.
Yep.
You did say up to one bedroom. I thought you previously indicated that it would be with one bedroom.
It's up to you, sir. If you want to amend my motion, I have no objection. Want to delete the words "up to"?
You have to -- you know, I think it's clearer if you delete the "up to." But we have a couple lawyers there that are better word sense than I.
I think it's the same result.
It is the same result.
Either way.
Yeah. I believe it is the same result. Do you have any strong objection, David?
No, not really.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you go further, on number five, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review, does that mean that -- I don't want that to trip us up when you get to the building inspector and he says, "Oh, you changed the plan from two bedrooms to one bedroom."
No.
So, if I may, that was the one that was bothering me when it came to whether we should -- whether we should instead condition it and say, "A plan with one bedroom shall be submitted to the town planner for her approval?" As part of the building?
I would prefer something along that line.
Yeah. If we said detached residential accessory structure with one bedroom?
No, he's specifically talking about
Number five.
Number five.
I understand. However, if we -- if it is up to one -- if they change the plan beyond the one bedroom, my assumption is, at that point, then you'd have to come back, correct?
But the plan that we submitted shows two bedrooms, so when it's referring to the plan, I think it means the plan submitted with the two bedrooms. That's my point.
I understand. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I understand the concern. Could I offer an amendment that the special permit is conditioned upon the submission of a revised plan showing one bedroom, subject to the approval of the town planner during the building?
You don't need to be that specific.
Subject to the town planner's approval. I offer that as amendment.
I have no objection to the amendment. I just want to make sure we have it on the record correctly.
Yes. Let's make sure we're accurate.
Can you read it back, or somebody read it back to us?
Yeah.
I have special permit as condition two. Sorry.
The submission of a revised plan showing one bedroom, subject to the approval by the town planner.
Showing one bedroom. Sorry, I'm not a speed writer.
And is subject to the approval by the town planner.
By town planner.
I have no objection to the amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Is that in lieu of any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning review, or in addition to?
I would say in lieu of --
I think you need both.
Yeah, I would think so, too.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, David, I didn't hear what David said, Mr. Chairman.
He said, "I think we need them both."
I agree. That is what I said.
Yep. Number five, as-is, you need? I think they contradict each other at that point.
I do, too.
I don't think you want number five as written.
Yeah, any -- David, the way number five currently reads is, "Any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review."
And why does somebody think that's wrong?
I think it's wrong, because the plan submitted shows two bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
And when it gets to the billing permit application, gets to the billing inspector, he could say, "You weren't allowed to change that plan without going back to the planning board." But --
We could say, "Any further changes to the plan."
Yeah.
It's still the same thing.
If I might counsel, I thought I understood that you were going to submit -- you're going to replace that plan with a one-bedroom plan.
Correct, and that's the function of the amendment.
Okay.
Fine.
Just to clarify, that that's what's going to be submitted, is a revised plan with one bedroom.
So, if you do say, "Any further changes to the plan," I would put the new condition before --
I would get rid of five.
"Any further changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review" should be after the additional condition you just put in, if you're keeping it.
Exactly.
Right.
May I?
Please.
I think if we make -- if we keep that condition in, we have to say, "Any changes -- any further changes to the one-bedroom plan referenced in
One bedroom.
-- condition number four
Right.
would be subject to further planning board review.
Correct.
One-bedroom plan.
Any further changes
To the one-bedroom plan.
To the one-bedroom plan
Yep.
referenced in condition four
Yep.
Would be subject
To further.
to further planning board review.
I have no objection to the amendment. And, Chairman?
Anybody else have any comments on that?
Dave, I have a question. When you look at the plan on A2
Yeah.
You're going to have two rooms unless that motion is taken, which is the stairwell.
That's why we need a revised plan.
Yeah, but so I assume that what they're going to do is, is erase the -- if the space is unlabelled, that's it.
That's what we were talking about earlier, when I was kidding about the size of the room.
Yep. It'll be one room.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there any, the motor vehicle has the rule with whether or not there's any requirement to have the stairs separated from a bedroom. I don't think it's a very safe condition.
Say that again, please.
I said, I don't think it's a very safe condition to have stairs down to the garage level to be not separated from a bedroom.
Right, you're concerned about the barrier there, David.
I'm concerned about a safety issue without a barrier.
Right, that's correct.
And if we put a barrier in, if we put a barrier in, is it considered two bedrooms?
They are going to have to redesign the second floor of this to comply with whatever the building code is going to say. This may look a completely different configuration, there may be a door at the top of the stairs, that's up to them to comply with whatever the building code's going to require.
That's fine, I think that's a good answer, thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Okay, so Charlene, would you care to let us know what you've written so that we can get this-
Gee, thanks.
Revisited.
So, at this point, the conditions are, the accessory apartment does not contain a kitchen and therefore is not an accessory apartment pursuant to Section 325-2, word usage and definition dwelling, single family with accessory apartment. Number two, the accessory structure shall comply with the Howard's Water Department requirements. Number three, the special permit shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Number four, the special permit is conditioned to the submission of a revised plan showing one bedroom and is subject to, excuse me, approval of the town planner. Number five, any further changes to the one-bedroom plan referenced in condition four shall be subject to further planning board review.
Okay. Sounds good, go ahead.
You don't need to vote?
We need a vote on amended motion.
We need to vote on the amended motion.
We need a vote to amend the motion.
Vote to amend the motion.
Second. Second, okay, vote by roll call, David?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous decision?
No, you need a vote.
Now we need to vote on the-
Main motion.
On the amended-
On the amended motion.
On the whole thing.
Okay. You got that, Joe? Can you go back through?
Yeah.
Actually, no, you don't need to re-read it.
We don't need to do that again.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, the issue I raised initially, is it up to one bedroom or with one bedroom?
With.
No, he said up to.
No, up to, one bedroom.
We did agree on up to?
Yes.
That's what you voted on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I scratched up to, I'm going to have to correct that.
Yeah, I had to re-put mine in.
Okay, all right, got it.
That it?
To vote on the main motion.
Vote on the main motion.
Joe made the motion.
I made the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Vote by roll call on the main motion?
As amended.
As amended. David?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Are you all comfortable with this?
I hope.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your attention to detail.
Sometimes it's sorting, you know what, from something else. Thank you very much. Mr. Robey, good luck. Thank you for that, thanks for coming.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should have a motion, anybody who's participating in this meeting, and the temperature where they are is over 70 degrees. Can only talk so much.
Yeah, okay.
It's usually a lot cooler in here, it's quite warm in here this evening.
It is warm.
You think so?
Yeah.
I'm always freezing, so.
So, the next issue for public hearing is PB 2019-04, Town of Harwich?
And technically, I'm sorry, this is not a public hearing, it is a public meeting.
Public meeting.
Unfortunately, it was put under the wrong category.
Okay, all right.
You still need to read into the record, though.
I will do, I will do so. So, it's not a public hearing, it is a public meeting, and we have PB 2019-04, Town of Harwich. Selectment is owner, care of Liz Argo, CEC manager, representative, seeks approval of waiver of site plan to clear wooded area of the solar farm overlay district for pending RFP to develop an additional solar array. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-55-F. The property is located at 205 Queen Anne Road, MAP 58, parcel M1-1, in the I-L zoning district.
I did get a question through the audience.
Yes.
Waving and going, do we get to talk, even though this is a public meeting? Yes, the public is entitled to speak.
Yes, so are there-
Bless you.
So, Chris, you're here, representing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, the reason why you're seeing me tonight is because Liz Argo apparently had a scheduled obligation outside of the state, so she was unable to attend.
Away.
She's away. So, I am pinch hitting for her, just to say that.
Thanks for being here.
So, as the town administrator, certainly we've been, administration through the selectmen have been trying to become a green community, we have officially achieved that designation. One of the elements of that was to allow for the expansion or the creation of a solar field, so through the efforts of your board and the Board of Selectmen at one of the previous town meetings, town meeting approved for zoning change to allow for the, additional solar array to be constructed. So, to that end, administration in working with CEVAC and Liz Argo are seeking to, at least initially here, on a waiver of site plan to clear the area. And part of the reason why we wanted to do this waiver, too, is we want to make sure people clearly understand that it is the town's intent to move forward with an expansion of our existing solar array into this area. The request before you this evening on the waiver is for the town or an agent of the town to go in and be able to clear the area, leaving a 50-foot buffer around the section. And if we have a map, you can see on the map, just to, off to my left and to your right, that the current solar array is directly to the east, and the parcel that's in question, which is town-owned parcel, is immediately to the west. To the north is factory road and industrial land, and industrial used land, so there are actually industry already there, and to the west and to the south is electric company easement, in my understanding, I believe there is some additional industrial land also.
And I also did this, which shows it better.
So, what we wanted to do is just to kind of clearly show to the community what our intent is, would be to clear the site with the exception of the 50-foot buffer area, and then allow for a RFP, RFP is a Request for Proposals administered through CEVAC, CEVAC is Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative, to put out to bid for a solar company to come in, construct an arrangement on the site, or solar array on the site, and then we would come into some kind of lease agreement with them for the town to generate revenue, similar to how we did it on the landfill site, but because technology changes, we don't have, obviously, the details of what that solar array would look like. So, when the RFPs go out, and assuming we do receive a participant or a person that wants to develop the site, we would have that applicant come before this board to go through the details of what they're going to construct. But I think in terms of form and function, and just really for full disclosure for the community, it is our intent to continue on what the original plan was presented to town meeting, and to take this land, that is town land, and convert it into a solar site. So, I believe it's pretty straightforward. In terms of the clearing, I really need to coordinate with Lynn Cooper, the DPW director, to see if that's something that we can do. Once I get approval, if approval is granted, we will make those arrangements, either for a DPW to do it, or to have a contractor do it, to kind of prep the site, to make it a little easier when the RFP goes out for a solar developer to come in and do work on it.
Thank you. Are there any comments, Charlene?
Do you want Joe first?
I can, I can go with Joe first.
Chris, just as a matter of interest, you know, I'm showing my gray beard when I tell you that I was here with the first array in, and we argued about, why don't you just extend it out into that little area? And for some reason, and I don't remember what it was, for some reason, they didn't want to do it at that time. I mean, I think this makes ultimate sense, and I think it made ultimate sense to me then, but for some reason, and it may have had to do with your butters, I don't know.
The only thing I could, I wasn't here for that, so I can only speculate. In my previous town, though, that we had a DPW site or a landfill site, and when you site assign a landfill, you have a specific area that's designated for that, and I believe when it was done originally, they wanted to capture the solar array on the permitted landfill sites. So, it could be that the site itself didn't include that area, that would be my speculation.
Just thought you'd be interested.
But just in terms of, we are, it is a use that makes sense to continue and to expand into.
Any question, any further questions, Mary?
I just have a question, I just don't know, does CEVAC currently, are they our current contractor with the regular solar array, or Cape and Vineyard Electric?
No, the current arrangement that we have is the town owns the property, I think they've changed their name, it was Ace-
I forget.
American Capital Energy is the person who built the array. What CEVAC does is, we don't have the in-house capability to do the billing and to off-takers. Off-takers are, we actually all the electricity that's generated, the town does have an arrangement to basically buy that in this excess, so they arrange for other entities to buy that electricity, and that's a function that CEVAC has, it's a little bit beyond the scope of a municipal entity and staff, so CEVAC acts as our agent to arrange for that.
That was my question there, they're currently our third-party contractor-
That's correct.
-to do that service. Okay, thank you.
So, Chris, if I might ask, who's going to pay for this clearance, is the Town of Harwich, or?
I think at this stage, we need to look at that, we could, if we can do it in-house, we will do it in-house, if I need to go to town meeting for an appropriation, then I need to seek an appropriation to do that. The other option is that we could have it as part of the RFP-
Yep.
-for the vendor to come in and do some preliminary clearing, and then have them come in with the full request for the actual array itself.
Yeah.
So, at this point, we haven't fully decided that.
Okay. Okay, so are there any, anyone in the audience?
Did you want Mike?
Yes, I wanted yours first.
I know, I know, but Joe had his hand up really fast. Just as Mr. Clark alluded to, the board may recall that a zoning bylaw and overlay map were approved to create the solar farm overlay district off of Queen Anne Road on town-owned property at this last May town meeting. As Mr. Clark noted, it was part of, one of the criteria necessary to become a green community. My comments are actually pretty simple, I did put this overlay visual together to try and show what the conditions are. The request before the board, in my opinion, is reasonable, this location was chosen for this type of use because it is located within the industrial zoning district. A 50-foot tree buffer shown in red on this will be maintained along with the northerly, along the northerly line, which backs up to existing industrial uses. There is an existing solar field to the east of this area, over the cap landfill, to the west is the other easement. Additionally, this is not in a water recharge area, it does not fall within natural heritage and endangered species jurisdiction, so we don't have critters or anything to worry about. I would recommend, though, that the remaining area, once the trees are removed, and when it's appropriate to do so, you don't want to do it in the middle of the winter, should be graded and seeded with grass or wildflower mix so as to mitigate any potential runoff that might occur. It's fairly flat out there, I think, with the trees there, it's kind of hard to tell, but, you know, from topography that I've seen in and around the area, it's pretty flat.
All right, Joe?
Just a quick question, I assume, maybe obvious to everybody else, that net-net, when we get it all, all done, that'll increase our income.
That's the intent behind this, is to increase our income. Just in terms of having a solar array, if we had additional capacity, that's probably the most lucrative for the town, if you would. In this case, because we've already absorbed all of our capacity in the existing arrangement, that this would be sold to off-takers, and off-takers are other ones outside of the community, or not even outside of the community, outside of the town, and on that, it's a sharing arrangement, so the off-taker gets some value for having the solar, and we get some value, so it's not as valuable for us, but it is revenue for the town that we do use right now, the existing revenue on the existing site, to offset operations. So, it's a fairly, you know, favorable thing to use solar revenue instead of taxpayer dollars to fund our operations.
And we go into it, understanding or knowing, that the town is not going to use or need all the energy that this will produce.
That's correct.
That's the, that delta becomes our revenue stream, that's correct.
Exactly.
And I think it's about, we generate around $300,000 now from the existing site, this is only a fraction of that, so it's not going to be as lucrative.
$300,000 American dollars?
$300,000, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Where else would you like to build?
Are there-
Well, actually, do you want to-
Just to that point, more comments?
Just on that, don't be surprised that, two things, really, we do have a RFP that's going out that shows several locations, so there are some that we're looking at on rooftops, so we would look at rooftops, which my understanding, I don't think we need to come in for rooftop.
No, for rooftop, no.
And we are looking at some other sites-
For canopies.
Of course, particularly in canopy over parking lots. Anything that we need to get town meeting approval, or come back before you, we will. The RFP is going to kind of drive a little bit of this process, because if we don't get any takers for any of these sites, we're probably not going to proceed to develop them, so that's why I kind of hesitated about saying, if we do the RFP, this is a very lucrative site, a very big site, so it would attract, I believe, a developer of solar to come in and do, so if we are, you know, obtain someone, then we will probably move forward with the clearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark, very much. Are there any comments from the audience on this? Please.
I'm going to turn, so I don't have people's back.
No worries.
Alan Hall, North Howard, I'm in a butter to an a butter to the southwest of this property.
Yep.
I just have a couple questions, I see the setback of 50 feet around the perimeter to the west and to the north, why isn't there a setback on the south side along the power line? Because that's a delineation change between zoning of industrial and residential currently right now. Is there any, what was the reason not to include a setback?
Yeah, that's the area there.
I want to say Madam Chair, I'm so used to my selectmen's names. I apologize. Please, through you, Mr. Chairman. My understanding on the solar array, that you want any site that faces to the south has a value to it, because it gets the most solar time that you have. If we were to leave the trees along that southern buffer, then that's going to have some impact on the panels, so I think that because the easement exists, that we kind of counted the easement as kind of the 50-foot buffer.
But if I might additionally, when we were talking about this location and meeting with CEVAC, it was also discussed that, yes, the trees would need to come down to allow for that southern exposure, but there would still be plantings, lower plantings planted, so the actual arrays would still be 50 feet back from that lot line, and there would be low plants planted there. So, the arrays cannot be right up to the lot line, there would still need to be a 50-foot setback in buffer.
All right, okay.
And the second question, the green space to the east of that, that goes along the landfill area, going to the east where there's no solar arrays, is that going to be infilled with solar arrays there at some point? So, why would we cut down trees to the left in the west, that's natural, if we're trying to keep green space in the town and create green energy, when we have vacant space to the right, why can't we just put the solar arrays there?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, again, you guys asked me to do a lot, so I try to, you know, understand as much as I can.
I'm just looking at common sense, there's no cost to develop and cut down the trees, you leave a buffer zone, it's a nice area, so I just don't know the value of cutting down trees to make more work when you already got a place that's already ready to, it looks like it could be just set on the ground and put in place.
Yeah, I believe the answer to that is, because it's a landfill, it is a mounded structure, so the mound actually then blocks the southern exposure, so I believe the reason why they didn't do that is because of the shadow from the landfill itself.
And you can't change the contours of the cap landfill.
You cannot alter that without opening up a-
So, that, excuse me?
It's just because of the mound, the backside of a mound.
That is, that department- That is, that topography goes down to the north?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, they would have captured that in the original application.
Goes down to the south.
Well, if it goes to the south, you'd be better off because then it'd be, the hill would be onto the north.
The hill is to the south.
Like the high point.
The high point.
High point is where the solar are.
The high point is to where the arrays are.
Well, I just think that there should be a little bit more, look at common sense of it. I mean, my opinion, and then just, you know, right now, my land is in residential. And at some point, maybe it might behoove the town to increase the industrial zone area there. If we're gonna have a solar array, a butt in this area, and you have the high tension lines. And I just wanted to get a sense of, if that was something that would be brought forward, how would the planning board feel of that if we were to expand zoning to the west of, to make it industrial? At some point.
They don't come here to do that.
Yeah, they do.
Do they?
It would be a zoning amendment. As a planner, I'd be all for it.
So I'm just looking at this area of concern because this is all that we have left in the town of Howard of industrial zone area. And there's a lot of debate in the newspapers about a lot of different things that are happening. And here we have an area that's depicted for industrial use. It was our landfill for many years. And the road, Factory Road, that's why it was industrial because that was the old factory road that went to the mills on the river way back in its day. There may be some visionary opportunities here to expand industrial use at this moment. And I'm just trying to look at, you know, the benefits for the town. If the town's gonna increase the solar array on land that they have industrial use that couldn't be used for any other purpose other than solar arrays, once that becomes. We're taking out some other land here now for that. Maybe we could absorb some more industrial use land, rezone to the west and south. Just something that I'd.
Charlene, listen, before, Charlene, we're happy to have you speak up. You know, you don't have to apologize, it's good.
No, 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 I'm just throwing this out here as ideas because I think, you know, looking forward, you know, there's other opportunities in this area. If that's what we're gonna gear ourselves to, is industrial use, maybe we need to make some more industrial use.
Could be. Charlene?
Just a couple of things. This did go to town meeting and was approved for this purpose in this area, which is zoned industrial. A solar field of this size in most communities is considered industrial.
Yes.
So it is a use, in my opinion as a planner, part and parcel with industrial uses.
Yes.
This is a landlocked area except through the town property.
Yes.
And that's how it would be accessed through, would be through the town property. There is an abundance of land to the west of this that is conglomerate of owner unknown and, you know, that is, is currently zoned residential. I think it does lend itself to industrial, but that is a conversation for another time. And I have spoken to Mr. Hall a couple of times about what that process would be. But, you know, this particular piece of property, and yes, it is, you know, heavily vegetated. But this was the purpose and intent at the town meeting for, for this area. And it is a proposed industrial use with the solar, especially this size. I mean, this goes beyond, you know, the solar on your home or a small thing that moves with the sun in your front yard.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and then I'm just reflecting, if you look to the future. So if our land doesn't become rezoned to industrial at some point, that becomes a burden for residential homes, for me, for an opportunity to sell some, to somebody else bordering and butting this area. So I'm just putting it out there on the table, you know, for the future.
Is there any other concern that you have, Mr. Hall? Is there any, anything left unsaid?
I just think, you know, we have a lot of land at that landfill to the east where they've been carving out the sand for many years. I don't know why we have to expand to the west. I don't know why we can't expand more to the east once they carve out some other areas of that dirt and sand down there that the DPW currently uses. It's a big pit there now, but where the old lagoons used to be. But it's just, you know.
Okay.
That's my input, thank you.
Thank you. Charlene?
We actually did look to the land to the east.
Yep.
And had conversations with the DPW director and the town administrator. And we, that area, if we ever need to expand anything relative to the DPW functions or a septic treatment plant, that's where that would need to go. Is to the east of the existing solar field where those other uses are.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That's been, the comprehensive wastewater management plan does have that area slotted already for a treatment plant and associated recharge sites, bringing back effluent, putting it back into the ground.
Right.
We are in the process of trying to change that and go to DHY to have a regional effort. But right now, in the books, that is spoken for as wastewater.
If we did it in our town.
Yes.
If we have to do it in our town. And even if we do it with DHY, the recharge site, because we've already done quite a bit of investigation on that, we know that that area can take cleaned water and put back into the environment at that location. So quite a bit of research and money has gone into checking that site out for that purpose.
And last but not least, I hope, additionally, the N-Star, which is now Eversource or whoever it is these days, that is 150-foot easement. So you've got that 150-foot of the electrical easement before you even get to the solar array. So that's why I put this one back up.
Okay. Are there any more comments at all from, please, speak up?
I'm John Sakis, I live in Howard Center.
Hi, John.
Couple of things, I take exception with that being landlocked. It looks to me on the map that Factory Road goes directly to that property. Is that correct? Am I mistaken? So I think that, I don't believe that to be landlocked, number one.
Factory Road between 136 and 137.
I think Alan pointed out, you have land already cleared. That's a lame excuse that it's a downhill slope. You go up the highway up in Sandwich. They have a solar array they put above the parking lot at the rehab where my wife had to go some years ago. So you can't tell me that you can't pick the panels up high enough to pick up the sun. I'm pretty sure that you could. Not that I'm an engineer. It's just that it seems a little ridiculous to take good trees. If you could expand that picture and show the proximity. You don't have many trees left to protect the pond and Flax Pond, which has had issues caused by the landfill.
And?
I'm grateful that you closed it.
Flax Pond is to the south of that array?
Sure, yes, I believe it's to the west. The power lines go right across Flax Pond at one point.
Yeah.
There's runoff coming from the power lines, you clear more land. You're talking about green, we want to be a green community. I don't see very much green in that picture. I mean, if that was a color picture, what percentage of it is green? And that doesn't make us a green community. You know, I was a cranberry grower for years, I'm out of business. It's not the town's fault, it's not anybody's fault but the commodity. But one thing we did was preserve and try to be stewards of the land. And clearing this, build it and they will come, kind of a thing, just doesn't make sense. Nobody's here saying they want to put a panel there. We're gonna build it and see if they come. So I just don't understand why we want to take good trees, cut them down. They're really, look at that picture. And that's really all I want to, well, one other question. They're asking for a waiver. I'm nervous, I think you can tell, I apologize for that.
It's okay.
I'm not a public speaker. But you're asking for a waiver of a site plan to clear the wooded area? Why on earth would you grant a waiver for something that has such an impact? I'm just questioning, what does that mean to grant a waiver of the site plan? And if I needed to come to town hall for anything, years ago, I came in for a pump house. I had to get a site plan. It was an existing pump house. There was no waiver. Why are you gonna give a waiver for this? My only thing.
Okay. Charlene, please.
It's all in the wording, unfortunately, and you did very well, by the way. It's a waiver of site plan review. Wrong way. No, that's okay. It's a waiver of site plan review in that they've indicated on the plan that I put back up on the, on the screen, they've shown the area that they would be clearing for the purposes of moving forward with a project. And it is moving forward with a project. If we don't get an RFP, if we go up for RFP and there are no submittals, the town's not gonna go and clear it. You know, there's, there's no rhyme or reason to do that at this point. They may try to go out again at a future point with another RFP to, to do that. What, just to remind the board and to educate the public, when this, when and if an RFP is issued, whoever that developer will be, they have to come in, back to this board, with a very detailed site plan to show how they're gonna revegetate along the southern border against the easement with the electric company. They've gotta show a number of things. As you may recall, that was about a three-page list of everything that they were gonna have to do in order to get this board's approval. It's not a special permit, but they need to abide by every single document and every single requirement in that bylaw that the town meeting passed last May. So it's not that they don't have to do anything, they certainly do. So this would not be a done deal tonight. There would still be much more scrutiny. A butters would be notified again when and if it ever did come back to this board for review and approval.
Thank you, Charlene, very much.
Sorry, I had to think of things after.
Oh, it's okay.
That way, I'm just looking at this plan, this is a good reference plan. And as Mr. Sakis pointed out, the Factory Road, how it comes down and meets the town property line, and you have that 50-foot setback. You can envision also a road in that 50-foot setback. And then you have 3.64 acres there of industrial use land that could potentially put six industrial lots in there for use for the town of Howard that could be sold and have income immediately, rather than waiting for the solar panels. It may disturb some of the trees, Mr. Sakis, I agree. And maybe you can keep some of the trees when you do the development. But there's a potential of six industrial lots because they're half acres owned. So there's some other revenue, maybe opportunities. I wouldn't cut our nose off despite our face too fast just because we have the current solar array. You may have some other opportunities. If you look to the west of the wooded area that's deemed to be cut down, there's three little lots that used to be part of the town that got sold to the town. Those were landlocked, but now they're private entities. So landlocked, that doesn't exist there.
Sir?
I think that it was mentioned that.
Please, come on up.
Sorry.
It was mentioned earlier by the gentleman to your left that years ago, that piece of land was looked at.
Yeah.
And then it, for some good reason, but we can't remember why, it was decided not to go cut those trees down. I think it would behoove the board to find out what that reason was. If it was a bunch of abutters that were complaining and they've all moved on and gone to their grave, then cut the trees down because I don't have much longer left either. But I'd love to see those trees stay there, rather than just cut that down to see if somebody wants to put solar panels there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just a, for a point of clarification from you to Charlene. All our waiver, all our grant of waiver will do is, if the town puts out an RFP and if a responsive request for proposals comes in and we accept it, all it does is allow the town to cut the trees without coming back to us.
Yes.
And that's all.
That's all.
And?
Go ahead.
And any construction of solar panels
Has to come here.
Would have to.
Has to come back, of course.
If I might, under the zoning bylaw, you cannot clear a property, particularly commercial or industrial, until you have an approved plan. So this, by going through the waiver of site plan review, this would allow them that first step.
To develop the plan.
To develop a plan.
Yeah. And then it comes back.
And then it would come back.
Yeah. Ma'am?
Maura Hall, North Howard. Hi. I just, I have some, you know, I'm all for solar development and things like that. But I do have some fairly large concern with the fact that care and concern was taken for 50-foot a butter, a 50-foot a tree buffer zone for all of the abutters that we can clearly see the lots delineated. But the lots that aren't actually appearing on this map to the south and the west of the, like, the high tension lines will not have a buffer zone so that you will, you'll have a clear view in there. And with the current designation of those lots, you know, I know, as you said, you could come and maybe get consideration for an industrial art designation at some point. However, currently, the way it stands, they are residential. So right now, there will be no, the trees will go down under this plan and there will be no visual 50-foot buffer as the other lots that we can see delineated on the map are receiving, so.
Okay. Thank you. Charlene?
Just that it's, it's a 50-foot setback. So, and they will have to revegetate.
So it's a, it's a 50-foot green space, if you will.
Right.
But it may not include trees.
It may not. If this was vacant land with nothing on there, it would be a 50-foot setback.
So, right, which is my next comment.
But did we not just clarify, if I didn't hear right, that the waiver purpose tonight was to allow for the tree, you know, the removal of the trees if there was a response to the RFP? And then there might have been some discussion here about possibly doing it in-house and things like that. So once the trees go down, we don't have a plan as to what the revegetation is for the sightline of the people, say, the south-owned property currently under a residential designation.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the review process, that if this, if there is a positive RFP and it moves forward with Company A, Company A has to come in with a full plan showing exactly where all their arrays are gonna go, how the construction's gonna go, and how they're gonna revegetate that 50-foot setback. There has to be vegetation in that 50-foot setback.
But that vegetation will not include trees that we're cutting down.
Not, nothing high.
It just has to be low.
Which will not shield a sightline
Because of the.
From a residential lot. You can view it, in other words.
Just a moment.
And, and right now, those are all owner unknown lots out there? I know there's some owner known.
I didn't say that.
Right now, it's, it's a mishmash in there, so.
So the.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. I'd say there's some owners known and taxes being paid.
So the, the waiver, the waiver, just so you, you understand it, the waiver is just so that the plan can be made. I mean, it doesn't mean that they're gonna go in right now and cut anything down. They're gonna put a plan in place. Then it will have to come back here. And then we'll have to, to review it again. I think by speaking up, you're able to voice what, what your concerns are, right? So if, if the property, as I understand it, to the south, below where you have the N-Star electrical area, right? Where, where is the, where's your property? Or where's the property that you're concerned about?
It's a butting that, however, those are, those are residentially designated right now, so.
All of that area where the, where the scale is, is all residential?
So therefore, depending on what, you know, there are some other abutters in there, obviously. But just, my concern is for the care and consideration that's taken to have the 50-foot tree line remain along all those designated lots you have. But the lots that are kind of not really showing on this map that are residential, again, I'll repeat, will not have a 50-foot buffer. And the, the waiver tonight allows them to remove the trees according to what we see here, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. So that's my concern, is once they are gone, then we'll see what the revegetation plan is. But by then, they're gone. And it's currently residential lots down there.
Great.
I was just gonna say.
I was just going to say, my understanding was that there's not a, a 50-foot waiver in addition to the 50-foot easement from the electric company. And I think maybe that's what the speaker was referring to. But there is a 50-foot buffer because, simply because of the fact that the electric company easement, I think, is 50 feet.
No, it's 150.
Oh, 150, excuse me.
150, yep.
So, three times.
So, the closest one would be, it would be about, in essence, a 200-foot buffer, the 50-foot for the setback plus the 150 for an easement. So, an easement, you can't put structures on an easement, obviously.
Correct.
I was just pointing out that it serves as a buffer.
You can't put a house in an electrical easement.
Are you saying that the high-power lines is the buffer's home?
No.
Is that what was just said?
What, what I was saying was, the woman said there's no buffer zone, no buffer on the south side. Yes, and I agree with it, that there probably should be. I mean, and...
No, and what I was saying...
Just because it's lucrative to have the south side open, if I had a beachfront lot that had trees on it, I'd love to have all those trees cut on my south side, but you can't do that. So, having that buffer, I think, I can understand why, why they're asking. But I guess my question is, I think it was just said that they would have a 200-foot buffer because there's 150 feet of high-power line. Let me back up a little bit. There's been, I think, no fact-checking. Things have been said, and we've had to backtrack, that, no, it's not landlocked. It's this, it's that. And to go back a little bit more, this gentleman said, years ago, there was a great reason to not cut those trees. For you to make a decision tonight without finding out that reason, I don't think that's being, doing your job. I think you need to go find out what the reason was before you make a decision tonight. If you can't, that's, it's your choice. I'm not on the board, but there was a reason. I think the town meeting might have voted. But town meeting voted years ago to dump sewage there in a raw pit. So, our town meetings don't always come out with the best outcomes when, when you leave it up to us to vote. So, with some common sense from the board to find out what the reason, the good reason years ago to not cut those trees and then make an educated decision whether to waive or not waive, I think, I don't, I think this should be postponed to your next meeting until we know more of the facts. That is my, my position as a citizen. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, yep. So, I think we have the, obviously, for the waiver of the site plan, we have a, we can, we can move to approve, or we can move, the board may deny the waiver, or the board may continue, as I understand it, correct?
If, true. If I might...
Yes.
If the board decide, whatever the board decides tonight, when this comes back, when and if this comes back after an RFP has been issued and a solar project is proposed for this, you cannot deny that.
Yes.
It, it is already an approved use. It just has to go through the process to make sure that all the checks and balances are done. But the board cannot deny a solar field in this area.
So...
That's how the bylaw was written, that's what was approved at town meeting. Just...
Well, I, I think, I think it's important for you to hear that, all of you, for, for speaking up. But I think it's, it's really important that you know and understand that, you know, the decision has already been taken. And it's not, it's not something that we can just alter here. It, it's, so, I, I think the, I think the best thing to do, unless there are any comments on this, is to close the public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
A public meeting.
Public meeting, and, and then move. So...
Just, Mr. Chairman, you know, just for the record, you know, I'm happy to, to put in there that only if the RFP, well, when the RFP goes out and only if we get a vendor that appears that they're going to be a, a successful vendor to do this, that we will then make the commitment to cut the trees. So, we will cut the trees unless we know with reasonable certainty that we're going to have a project going forward.
If, if, Mr. Clark, if that, if we do get that vendor, is there any, is there any way that, for example, along that south line, outline, is there room to put the array in there and keep and add an additional 50 feet, or no?
I'm not following you.
50 feet of no trees coming down?
Yep.
So, here's...
On the south side?
It's going to defeat the solar.
I, I think if I understand your point, Mr. Chairman, we may lose some additional panels by having the full-size trees in there. You know, that's certainly something we could explore and see. You know, my, my instincts would tell me just to go with the low-ground cover. So, if the panels are six or seven feet off the ground, then we would do ground cover up to that six or seven feet.
Up to that, yeah.
I mean, people do see the, the current array now, so we're not, we're adding to the, to that, not necessarily distracting from...
And it would, it would block the light getting to the panels, I'm sure.
That's the, that's the reason why they have to come down.
Okay. Yes.
Through you, is there any way that a, a fence or something else could be, could be constructed there that wouldn't?
I believe, I don't have the regulation in front of me.
Yep.
But I believe a fence is required.
Okay. And it could be a...
The current array.
Yeah, there, there, there are...
Variations.
Three or four pages of requirements that the array would have to meet in order to, to be, get through the process. And I, I'm fairly certain that there is a requirement for a fence. The board also can say you need to put a fence in.
With any electrical installation, there should be a fence.
There's a good chain link fence around the current one.
Right. I'm saying, could you put in something besides a chain link fence that is more of a, of a privacy shield for neighbors? Is that something that would be allowed? I, I'm asking, raising the question, just to ask.
Certainly something that this board, through the process, can say on this area, you need to put a solid, you know, fence. There's a number of different things.
Just asking...
Yeah.
If something like that can, can add to the vegetation in giving the neighbors a little relief, in that sense.
I believe so.
Okay.
Do we need to move to close the public hearing?
We do.
No, it's not a public hearing.
Public meeting.
Move to close the public meeting.
No, you don't need to do that, sir.
Okay. Motion to adopt the following. One, the parcel is in the IL district. Two, the application does not substantially change the relationship with structure or lack of structure to the site and to abutting properties. Three, there will be limited impact on other existing uses of the site.
Second, second that, or vote by roll call? David?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Move to approve case PB 2019-04, Tana Howard's selectmen as owner of, as owner, care of Liz Argo, CVEC manager, representative to approve a waiver of site plan to clear the wooded area of the Solar Farm overlay district for pending RFP to develop an additional solar array. The application is pursuant to the code of the Tana Howard, 325-55F. The property is located at 205 Queen Anne Road, map 58, parcel M1-1 in the IL zoning district. The decision is based on the findings of facts stated and the fact that the proposal does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site or to abutting properties and structures. And the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval. It is understood that following the clearing of the trees, the area will be graded and seeded with grass or wildfire, wild, wild flower, flower mix so as to mitigate any potential runoff.
Okay.
Did you...
We want to put in the, the condition that he proposed?
That until such time as an RFP is granted, there shall be no removal of trees?
Yes.
For the clearing be delayed until such time as a viable RFP is...
I like that better.
I do. I amend.
Move to amend.
I'm fine with that, obviously.
All right, let's move to amend then. Second?
I have no objection to the amendment.
Okay.
Can you say that one more time?
Clearing is...
That the clearing would be...
Delayed.
Delayed until such time as a viable vendor for the RFP has been submitted and identified.
I'd prefer the amendment, the amendment to the motion.
So, we, we now have to...
There was not a second, though, to that amendment?
There was, Craig seconded.
Craig did, oh, sorry, I missed that.
Yeah. And we take the vote, right?
To amend.
To amend.
Vote to amend the motion.
Vote to amend the motion, and we'll do that by roll call. David?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Now, you need a, a vote for a little thing.
Yes. Yeah. Want to make a motion?
Move to approve the case PB 2019-04.
You already did this motion.
All you have to do is say to...
Oh.
Yeah, you just...
Move the main motion as amended.
Yeah.
Yeah, move the main motion.
The main motion as amended, thank you very much.
Thanks. Second, is there a second?
There's a second, Alan.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Craig.
Craig?
Oh, okay.
Craig, via, via roll call, David?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Okay. The public, the public meeting.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Definitely, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next, next item on the docket, of course, is the public meeting zoning amendment discussion and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just wondering...
Do you want to take Mr. Marsh out of border?
Yeah.
Can we take Mr. Marsh out of border?
Sure.
Thank you very much for that.
Unless he enjoys sitting there.
You were very patient.
It's tedious.
So, Mr. Marsh, how are you?
Very good.
How are you folks?
Good, thank you.
So, we're talking about Baskin Hollow, correct?
Well, I'm actually here begging.
Okay.
We sent a, a letter, Susan, we'll do in my office, sent a letter on January 26th, kind of summarizing what I'm here for tonight. And what I'm here for tonight is to ask the planning board to make an exception to the rule of when a road can be placed on the list for plowing in, by the DPW. We finished basically the road and the paving, all with inspections in, in December at Baskin Hollow. And what we haven't finished yet is the grading and seeding of the side shoulders of the road and the installation of the bounds. As you know, we have all been living with nightmares with National Grid, the gas company.
Yep.
And although we're on their list, it's been tedious dealing with them. But they're going to put the, the gas main in, in the middle of February, they tell us recently. So, there's no point in, in grading out the side shoulders of the road, loaming, seeding, and installing the bounds until they're done and out of the way. So, that pushes us into warmer months to be able to grade and seed and not have the loam wash such that we can seed the side shoulders of the road and the grass will germinate. But the road is, is, is done. All the drainage is in, the sewer line's in, the paving, the binder, of course, and the top, of course, are all in and all inspected by the town. And we would, we would like, also like to say that we have started one house and we have two other custom houses to start toward the middle of February. We're going to have probably, on the three houses, 20 men in their vehicles working actively from about the middle of February on. Historically, February and March have been the, the heavier snow months here on Cape Cod, and especially the lower part of the Cape. So, we would, and with these men working, it's critical for us that they can come and go safely. They'll be patronizing the whole village of East Harwich and Stop &amp; Shop and the 400 Club and CVS and on and on. And we'd like to make everything as convenient for our workmen as possible. So, we'd like to ask that you make an exception and allow this road to be placed on the list for the DPW to plow.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have... Sorry?
Any comment, Charlene?
Um, I think Bill already knows where I stand on this. I'm not supportive of his request. It has been the practice based on the performance guarantees that the town will not take over any maintenance of any roads until such time as there is a complete covenant release. I do understand, and I actually have no problem in the future once the road is completed, because he has to wait for the sewer for the last four remaining lots. If the four houses are built, if the loading, the, the, you know, loaming and grading and seeding and sidewalk are, are all put in, I would have no problem recommending to this board that, yes, go ahead and allow for it to be paved. But I do, I do believe it's setting a bad precedent. I never say that. So, I think this is setting a bad precedent to allow this to be plowed when the, the work is not completed. In the past, the board has never allowed it, so I, I would not recommend it now. If the road was complete and there were still the four lots being held under covenant through no fault of his own, because it is tied to the sewer, I think that is different, because it's a restriction that's actually put on not only by this board, but also by the Board of Health. So, that's, whatever you choose to do is fine, but I'm, I'm not in favor of, of the request.
Okay. Comments? Mary?
May I have a question? Doesn't, through you to Charlene, because you may know, doesn't putting a non-public way, plowing a non-public way, doesn't that require an appropriation, an approval at town meeting?
No, this, no. This town actually adopted whatever provision it was of mass general law that the town will plow, plow, private roads, provided they meet a certain standard and have also been released from all planning board covenants and sureties. So, if they instead put a, a bond down, that would have to be released before the town could plow the road.
So, Charlene, how do we treat Austin Road, for example, in East Harwich?
I honestly don't know. I don't know what the status of that is.
He does.
I think I do. I think the town plows it. But I, I don't know that for certain.
I don't, I don't know if there's any covenants held on that, though. I don't, I don't know that's...
The town must plow it.
I don't know the status of that.
I'm laughing, because he owns the property all around.
I know, I know.
So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm asking that question knowing that I drive down Austin. And...
To go around the intersection.
Exactly. I mean, I go down there almost every day.
I, I can only presume that, because that was an extent, Austin was a dead-end road. And then it went for modification to expand it to come out onto 39. I don't know if there was a covenant for that. That predates me. If, I'd be saying the same thing even, you know, with Austin Road. I'd say it for Arthur's Road, which is going in, which is not getting plowed right now. And that has houses going on it. It's a responsibility of the developer to do it.
Yeah. Joe?
Can you tell us what you want us to do here tonight?
I'd like you to let me, or let the DPW plow the road. The comments are being made by Charlene that the road is not complete. The bounds are not in, the side shoulders are not done. And we're still waiting, of course, per the Board of Health, for the sewer hookup. But the road itself, the piece of asphalt that you drive on, is complete and done, with drainage, with utilities, with everything else that needs to be done. The taxes for the town on this property went from around $1,000, $1,500 a year to now $12,000 a year. And I think that we're, as the owner of the property and future owners soon to be, in fact, some of them already are owners, they're entitled to have the road plowed. Never mind the, the safety, health, welfare of the road being open with workmen working on three, at least three different houses right now.
Mary?
But there's still a covenant, correct? There's still a covenant?
There still is a covenant.
And what's in place as far as the covenant, what's left?
There's four lots being held.
And part of that, Charlene, to be fair, part of that is, is the Board of Health's decision to say that we want these houses hooked up to a sewer line, and we, we can't get there for two years, and so we've constructed the dry sewer line. We're in the middle of constructing a leach bed. We don't have to construct the denite, uh, components to denitrify this, the sewer, because the sewer's coming within, well, two years, a year ago was said to us, two years. We suspected it might be three, but we're not going to get full release of covenant until that also is done.
I, I do believe I did say that if the road is completed, and when I say the road completed, I mean grading, seeding, sidewalks, et cetera. That is completed. I certainly would have no problem, even though four lots still have to be held back. And that was an agreement that the applicant made with the Board of Health, so that they would not have to do the denitrification system on Lot One. So that was a choice that they decided to do. If and when the road is totally complete, I know the road is complete, but the road also includes other things. I would have absolutely no problem recommending to this board, even though four lots are still being held, to, to allow for this to be plowed under the town. But I, I just, I think this is setting a very bad precedent. You have other roads in town that are being developed that they have not come to the town asking that they be plowed. The developer themselves are taking care of the required plowing, allow their workers to get there.
Okay, Joe?
I, I don't remember. In other words, you want a motion. I, I, I'm not even sure we have this authority. You want a motion from the planning board to add this. Baskin-Hollow Road to the snowplow list.
Right.
Can we do it?
I thought we were led to believe by Charlene that if we came in and asked that you, you had the ability and the authority.
And I think you do. I think they do.
We've never done it before, I'm not sure.
But I don't think they should, and I explained that to, um, Susan Ledoux at the time.
So.
The DPW, um, highway, um, not the director, but the gentleman who's in charge of roads.
Yes.
He is comfortable with the road the way it is and would have no problem plowing it, provided this board signed off and said it was okay for him to plow. Because he knows the process and he knows that while there are covenants being held, he's not supposed to touch a road.
Yeah. Joe?
I make a motion that we, uh, add Baskin-Hollow Road to the town's snowplow list for, uh, two thousand, uh, eighteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Charlie?
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second, so we'll take vote by, uh, roll call. David?
No.
Craig?
No.
No.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary?
No.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes.
Ty?
It's Ty, so the motion fails.
Well, thank you very much for your time. It won't snow anymore.
Thank you. I would also like to thank everyone for the, the calm discussion of this matter. Okay, so now we're going to go back to, um, back to, uh, the zoning amendment discussion and begin with accessory dwelling unit by law.
Okay, so, when last we were here. I have these out of order. I'll figure this out. Um, we, there was discussion to make it by right, and Mary had the brilliant idea, rather than deleting and, um, move, you know, replacing with, that it actually just be moved. And you asked me.
The whole.
The whole section, instead of, we were going to delete and add a new section, but.
This is the, on the portable signs?
No.
No. This is the affordable dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling unit by law.
I got you. Thank you.
Um, and this was sent out to you, I think, late by Elaine, because we didn't get it from, um, Attorney Costa in time for the packets. And I was out last week, so, um, I apologize that I wasn't here to kind of man things, or woman things, whatever. Anyway, so you all asked me to send it to counsel. Um, he did agree that, yep, we can do it, just as a shifting it over. He did reword it, not substantially, but just in process, and I think it's a much better product. So essentially, um, you know, it's exact, pretty much exactly what you all had with a couple minor wording corrections, or recommendations that I think are all, uh, very good, very good indeed. There still is the question of, um, whether to put a provision in for rental for consecutive months.
Yes.
Attorney, uh, attorney, excuse me, uh, Selectman Cascal was at the last meeting. He did ask that we reach out to our, um, housing consultant, which I did. You got, I forwarded to you an email from Jake Hoborn.
Yep.
Who's the director of the CDP, and he gave what I thought was a, a, a well-argumented reason, that he would recommend one year.
Yes.
That being said, I do believe there needs to be a minimum, or a ma, min, minimum.
Minimum.
No, thank you, number of months, um, in which they can be rented. And I go to the purpose of what the bylaw is, and this is an existing purpose. This wording is not changing. This already exists in the bylaw. And the purpose, um, the intent of permitting accessory apartments is to, A, increase number of small dwelling units available for rent in town; B, increase a range of choice of housing accommodations; C, encourage greater diversity of population with particular attention to young adults and senior citizens; and D, encourage a more economic and energy-efficient use of the town's housing supply while maintaining the appearance and character of the town's single-family neighborhoods. With that being said, this would not preclude anybody who has an accessory apartment of letting their family members use it. It's only if you're renting it.
Yeah.
So if you're going to rent it, um, and, and he did clarify, um, Attorney Costa did clarify and said, and if rented, shall be rented for a term of no less than. We had six months in there just as a, a conversation piece. So I do think there needs to be something in there, because the intent of this bylaw is to create housing that people can live in, not just a weekly rental or a monthly rental.
Right. Okay, any comments? Mary?
I have a question, if I may. The changes that he's showing here, are these, it looks to me, and I could be wrong, it looks to me like they're changes to our existing, to what's already been approved and is in the, is in the code. Is that correct?
We, both, because you all had, um, changes you wanted made. For example, eliminating, um, the requirement, um, the proposed you shall create traffic hat and, uh, you all decided we wanted to take that out. So we're shifting it from one section of the bylaws to another section and then amending it to what you.
Okay.
Were comfortable with.
It would be great from my perspective if, and I, I actually think that's what he did, is if the track changes version shows the existing with just what we decided of the final changes that would be going to town meeting for.
I think that's what we're showing.
Yes.
That's what we're showing here.
Okay.
Right.
That's what we are showing here.
And that, I guess, I wasn't clear on my question.
Yep.
Because for the same reason, that's what, those changes are the only things that.
Right.
That the AG's office will look at.
Exactly.
Um.
So anything that's being deleted is in strikeout, like.
And anything that's added is in bold and underlined.
Bold, underlined, exactly. And I will double-check that to make sure that that is, is.
That's, yeah, that's.
Throughout, yeah.
If I may, one follow-up?
Yes.
Just based on the conversation with Jake Hoborn, I'd like to see us change C to, for no less than twelve consecutive months.
Which, where, here with me?
Under, under three C, where it says for no less than six consecutive months.
The six was the placeholder, right?
Six was the place.
The six was the placeholder.
Holder, uh, but if our, if our affordable housing consultant is recommending that we go to the twelve, I'd, I'd like to see us go to the twelve. I don't know whether I, um, my colleagues here on the board agree with me, but, um, from my perspective, if, if the purpose is to help us with dwelling units, then.
So if, if, let me understand, if we were to go to twelve and Johnny Jones, uh, owned a principal dwelling and accessory apartment, he couldn't rent it for a month?
He couldn't, couldn't rent it for a month. His kids could use it whenever they wanted.
Whatever, yeah.
But if he was renting it, it, he'd need to rent it for.
Not less than a year.
Not less than a year.
I, I, I'm not particularly.
To encourage fully, to encourage year-round.
Yeah.
I, I understand what it, what it does.
Yeah. Craig?
The only thing I would say in response to that, Mary, is I agree with everything you said, but it also defeats one of, and I'm not sure if it's spelled out here, is, or, but we've talked about as a board, um, trying to accommodate the worker labor force, summer labor force, if you will. And we talked about three months or four months for that purpose. So my feeling is the six months is good because it would help to accommodate that. I don't know how long their H one B visas are or anything like that, but that would be more. I would find it hard for, um, a renter, uh, or, yeah, renter, to convince somebody that's on a visa to sign a lease for twelve months. And we, if we put that twelve-month language in there, it probably wipes out that entire demographic.
So.
Mary?
If I may, my only, um, my only thoughts are, one, I guess I'm more con, personally am more concerned about the year-round employees, only because, you know, you go down to, you go down to the rec department, there's a sign in the window that says, wouldn't it be great if, if people who worked here could act, could actually afford to live here? And that unfortunately is, is a fact for, um, a lot. And the J ones, I, I agree it's a problem. I do hope that there are other things coming down the pipeline that are going to address that, not just the single accessory apartments, but, you know, I understand the arguments.
And, and you raise a good point, and I would, um, wonder if, if we put in the res, put in the six month and a, and a, an owner had the opportunity to rent to a family of four that wants it for the year. Well, they would, they'd be more than me, if we put six months as the requirement, they'd be more than, and I would think they would be more than happy to say, yeah, you want twelve months? I'll give me a lease for twelve months versus six.
This doesn't preclude them from doing twelve months.
No, not at all.
They can do it for five years if they want to.
Yeah.
If I may, I think the reality is going to be that they're going to, they're going to lease it for six months, and if you're anywhere near, near the water, they're going to kick them out for six months and, and get the higher rental rate, which I understand the benefits of, that I really do. But it doesn't, it doesn't help us with the, with the year-round.
Yeah, labor force.
And that's just my reasoning, I mean.
And residence.
Right. Schoolteachers and the police and, police officers and.
Go ahead, David.
There's a, another very, probably a smaller segment of the workforce that camps out during the warmer three months, and they need, uh, housing for the nine months when it, or eight months when it's cold. I know several people that have, have used their home, and they bought a home, they used it in the summer, and they've rented it to some of these, these kinds of, uh, workers during the rest of the year. Now, I know it's a small segment, but the, another issue is, is that if somebody rents for twelve months, there's nothing that precludes them from leaving after six months or eight months. And sometimes the, uh, the owner would sign a, sign a lease recognizing that that's going to happen. It's like, can't find another tenant. So, you know, there, there's a lot of dynamics to this that, that, uh, we, we probably won't be able to regulate.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with you, David.
And, and I agree with the six months too, right?
Yeah.
I think it gives enough freedom that if they wanted to roll it over to twelve, they can do so.
Yeah.
Without restricting it.
Craig?
I also, uh, agree with the six months, but different, uh, issue. On item number three, should we delete that first criteria? Because if I read it, it seems to be, maybe it should have been deleted and that was just missed as a strike through.
I think it's the title, if I may.
Oh.
I think it's, I think it's, you've got one purpose, two definitions, three criteria.
I now think you're right.
I think it needs a period after it.
She is right.
Yeah.
She's smart.
She is.
Thank you, Counselor.
Very good.
No, I, I, I agree. I mean, uh, are there any other comments on the changes that have been made to this document?
I have none.
We have to vote on the months?
I can't hear you.
We have to vote on the months?
It's in here a six, so if you're good with how this is written.
Yeah, just adopt the whole thing.
Yeah. Well, it's not, what, what you would be doing is a motion to, um, accept this as written and refer it to the Board of Selectmen to start the public hearing process.
I, I just made that motion.
I thought you did, Joe.
You're good.
Is there any?
There needs to be a second before discussion.
Second.
Are there, hold, hold, hold your horses there, everyone?
No, there's a motion on the floor.
No, there's a motion on the floor. You need a second before you can have discussion.
So, second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. So we'll take a vote by roll call on the motion and the second.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm, uh, I haven't caught up with you. Would you read the motion again?
The motion is for the board to, um, accept the proposal as written and to refer it to the Board of Selectmen so as to begin the public hearing process. They need to refer it back to you.
So we're at six months?
Yes.
It's at six months.
Correct.
All right, thank you. If you're calling to vote on mine, it's aye.
Okay, you're aye. Craig?
Aye. No, no.
Twenty more, okay.
No, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Charlene?
Yes, sir.
Do I assume that, uh, you'll clean this up?
I will clean this up.
Before it's sent to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, I will probably be in here at seven-thirty tomorrow morning to do that because it needs to get to them.
Thank you.
Tomorrow.
I knew, twelve noon.
Yes. And I have meetings after that, and so, yeah.
That's a, that's, this is a good move. Okay, next, we have the, uh, never-ending opportunity to comment on freestanding portable signs. Charlene?
I'm not even going to do this because this, my PowerPoint got all messed up. So, anyway, you have the language, um, that we discussed the last time. The only change that I added was on item number five, because we talked about movement. I said, I added in parentheses, "Accept any necessary hinge to fold and unfold said sign."
Yep.
Does that work?
Sure.
Yes.
David?
I, I'm tickled pink with it.
Okay, do we have a, uh, Charlene, we do have to vote on this, right?
This would be the same motion, move, the motion would be to, um, accept this as written, to forward it to the Board of Selectmen to start the public hearing process.
I make that motion.
Second.
Second, okay, we're, we'll take a roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I think this is great, and it took us a while to get here, but I think it's worth the effort. But as I was re. Um, but as I was rereading this tonight before the meeting, it struck me that there's nowhere in here that says anything about placement of the sign, and I know we've discussed it.
That is, if you look at, the sign shall comply with the requirements of section three twenty-five, twenty-six, D through G, that tells you where you can put it.
And that gets into the whole-
That sounded terrible.
Issue that-
One street and the other street, and, uh, personal sidewalk versus-
Exactly.
Or private versus-
It's in the body of the sign ordinance, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Perfect. No more questions, sir.
That was a good question.
That was a very good question.
Very good, so, thank you so much, Craig, for that. Um, okay.
Now, these next two are two that you have not discussed a lot.
Right.
If you are comfortable moving forward, I'd say great. If you are not, um, I am not adverse to the board tailing this to a future discussion in town meeting. You only have tonight to vote to send these to, to the Selectmen. If you're not comfortable, the warrant closes on the eighth. So, they need to take a vote to refer this back to you next Monday.
On building height and re- retaining wall.
Building height and retaining wall.
Retaining wall.
Retaining wall.
Yes.
So, the building height, again, is a bylaw that we borrowed, stole, from the town of Dennis, who borrowed, stole from the state of New Jersey after Hurricane Sandy.
Yep.
And what this does is, if you are in a floodplain-
Yes.
Right now, if you're in a floodplain and you need to elevate your house to accommodate being, um, a foot or two above the base flood of it, elevation based on what the building code requires, um, you have to go to the zoning board of appeals because you're exceeding the thirty-foot height limit.
Yep.
Which just makes it that much more prohibitive and costly and everything else. A perfect example, there's a wonderful old sea captain's house down in West Harwich.
Yes.
The owner's name is Chamberlain.
Yes.
And, um, I mean, they're doing an absolutely beautiful job on that property. And she had to go to the zoning board of appeals to, to lift it up.
Mary?
And it was over a hundred years old, so she couldn't demolish any, any part of it-
Right.
-without coming to historic as well, so, so-
And she, I mean, she's doing an absolutely beautiful job on-
If she didn't get the, the variance, she would've-
Yeah.
Been in trouble with historic, so-
Yeah.
Joe?
I have a question on the, the retaining walls.
Are, are we doing height first?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll get to it. We'll get, we got the height first. So, Charlene, if, look, I, I'm, I'm not in favor of delaying things, right? I'm, I'm, I think that this is appropriate and we, we should send it along. So, in order to do that, we have to, to take a vote on-
Vote to accept it, refer it to the Board of Selectmen to start the public hearing process.
I just made that motion.
So moved.
You second?
I second it.
I'll second. Craig?
A procedural question, clarification for me. You said, in, once the Selectmen hold the public hearing, and then they would refer it back to us?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
It with, with what? A recommendation?
No, loo- look back at your zoning amendment primer that I did for you.
Yeah, is this a test?
Yes.
And it is a test.
I'm gonna fail.
Mass general law for zoning amendments requires that the proponent of a zoning amendment, it can be the planning board, the zoning board, the Board of Selectmen, or by petition-
Yes.
That, once it's received by the planning board, or, the petition goes straight to the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
It gets referred to the Board of Selectmen, who then has to refer it back to the planning board so that the planning board can start the public hearing process.
Correct.
It's a ridiculous process. Many communities bypass it. I don't.
Yeah, I don't think we should.
I don't. I, in my thirty-two years, yes, I was twelve when I started, of doing this, I have never bypassed it because I think it is very important to follow- the process correctly.
So, so, just to, so that I understand again, so-
They don't make a recommendation, they're just refer it.
They don't recommend, they, they refer it back to us, and then we hold a public hearing?
You hold a public hearing.
But we have to have this in by February eighth?
You're already in. Yeah, it is. This goes, the way this will go to the planning, to the Selectmen tomorrow is how it will appear in the town meeting warrant.
Yes.
If as a result of the public hearing-
Yeah.
The board decides that it needs to make a change to it, as long as it's not outside the scope of the article, you can do that, and there's a couple ways you can do it. You can either make your motion with the amendment included in your motion, which this board has done before, or you make the motion on how it's written in, in the warrant, and then, um, that is seconded, and then somebody gets up and moves to amend the main motion. So, there's a couple different ways you can do it.
Okay.
The, the public hearing process does not lend itself well to making changes.
Right.
You know, if there's a grammatical error, error, or typo, those you can fix. You know, we've done that before, and the Attorney General has not been adverse to that. But it's still, it's, can be very cumbersome to try and make an amendment on town meeting floor.
Yeah.
You lose people in the process, and zoning is confusing enough.
So, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. So, at this point, I'd like to take a, a vote by roll call. So, David?
I.
Craig?
I.
Joe?
I.
Mary?
Hi.
Alan?
I.
I. So, we'll move that along. Now, the next-
Retaining wall.
Is the retailing wall.
And this is kind of the same thing. If you have a septic system that needs to be upgraded or what have you, and because of the way the definition of structure is in our bylaw and under the building code, anything, um, a, a retaining wall is a structure under our bylaw.
Yeah.
So, what this is proposing for the purposes of septic systems only is that you can be within ten feet of this, the sideline-
Yes.
With a retaining wall for the purposes of a septic system. If you need to be closer, and oftentimes they do need to be closer, it was felt that, no, let's do the ten feet. If they still need to be closer, they still need to go to the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, and, and then they would go through the appeal and waiver process.
Yeah.
So, th- so this is a very simple, basic, basically, a simple-
One, one would hope.
Well, yeah, one would. Joe?
I just have a question, see if somebody else is driven, driven by it. If you drive down twenty-eight and you go by where the bumper boats are?
Yeah.
Yep.
The next house- has one of these.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Elevated, yep.
Yes.
Yep.
And it's not within ten feet, but he's okay. He or she, whatever it is.
It may be interpretation, because that's been there for a number of years.
Sure.
A number of years, and it may be that either at the time, the definition of structure didn't include retaining wall, or, um, for the purposes of the fact that it was for a septic system, they didn't call it a retaining wall. It, it depends on interpretation. Under the current building commissioner, he has, um, angst with the way that the bylaw is right now.
Yeah.
And he's, he's had to have people go to the zoning board of appeals for the septic system.
My question, I, I, I'm not sure-
He'd be fine.
No, go ahead.
He's grandfathered.
That would be grandfathered.
Oh, yeah. And there's gonna be a number of them that predate this, that are gonna be fine. Yeah, they won't be in zoning violation, they would be grandfathered.
Have they seen this?
Building commissioner, yes.
Mary?
So, ten foot, ten feet from the sideline, they can just build it as a matter of right?
Right, with approval of the-
Obviously, they have to approve the septic plan. Um, if it's eight feet and they need the variance, it's Board of Health plus zoning board of appeals.
Yes. Originally, we didn't have a setback in there, but, um, Mr. McParlin was adamant that there should be one. And I'm, I think it's fine. I have no, no problem at all with, with his concerns.
Okay.
By the way, I don't wanna have any problems with the Board of Health, because my, my dentist just went on the Board of Health.
Uh-oh.
I don't wanna be sitting there.
Watch him, when he's got a drill in his hand.
That's right.
Okay, so, do I hear a, a motion?
Motion to refer to the Board of Selectmen.
To accept it and refer to Board of Selectmen to start the public hearing process.
Second.
Second, okay, vote by roll call. David?
I.
Craig?
I.
Joe?
I.
Mary?
Hi.
Alan?
I.
I. Unanimous.
Thank you, lady and gentleman.
Okay, so, we've started new business already, and the topic next is vice chair slash clerk, vote to appoint. Candidates and vote. So, do we have a candidate for vice chair of the planning board?
I'm, I, I nominate Alan Peterson.
Second.
As vice chair.
Move to close the nominations.
Discussion? Look, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm great with all this. I, I think it's, first of all, I'm really pleased with how this board works together. I, I, I mean, I've never seen a group of people disagree more politely and, and agree very well. So, uh, you know, I'm all in favor of this, and I certainly will support the recommendation.
You need to call for a vote.
So, we're gonna call for a vote?
I will accept that.
You have no choice.
I know, I know.
So, so, we have a motion to vote, and it's been seconded?
Yep.
So, roll call vote. David?
I.
Uh, I.
Joe?
I.
Hi.
I.
Alan, he gets to vote too.
It's your vote.
I.
Okay, so it's unanimous, and Alan Peterson will be our vice chair.
Okay.
And that, and congratulations.
Yay, Alan!
Okay, next, we're actually getting through this.
We are.
The meeting minutes, uh, from January-
You have to get the clerk.
Oh, clerk.
Actually, the, the vice chair serves as the clerk too.
Okay, alright.
I think so.
That's, yes.
Good thing we have a recording secretary.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Hi, Kate.
Mr. Naglia, yeah, so-
I think, uh, historically, you've guys never have appointed a clerk. It's always the chair and the vice chair slash clerk.
Yeah, the vice chair is the clerk is-
You don't have to do anything.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
That's a good job.
Except if the chair's not here, in which case, then you run the meeting.
I would run the meeting.
Yes, perfect. To move on, to move on, move ahead, meeting minutes from January seventh.
Move to adopt the meeting minutes, uh, Monday, January eighth?
No, it's Monday, January seventh, that is a typo.
Monday, January seventh, two nine, thousand nineteen.
And Tuesday? We have minutes for the, the meeting with the-
And Tuesday, January eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Yep, two sets of minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, vote by roll call. David?
It's a point of order, it's chairman, there are two sets of minutes. One, the joint meeting, and the other, the meeting of Tuesday, January eighth, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct, yes.
And there is a, there are type, there's a, a small typo on the, uh, minutes for Tuesday on page five.
Okay.
Uh, in the, uh, paragraph beginning with accessory drop, dwelling unit bylaw, on the second line, it's the Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, the previous evening instead of even?
Oh, even, yeah.
Yeah, even, yeah.
I just wanted to prove to you that I read them.
I am so pleased.
I was gonna comment on it.
We are eternally grateful and very appreciative.
And on the, uh, on the Monday meeting minutes, uh, on the first page, under planning board members, president, it's membered instead of, maybe dismembered.
Remembered.
Yeah, that should be an S.
We wanted to make sure you were remembered.
Oh, absent, oh my god. That's both of us.
Brad, the spell, spell check didn't pick that one up.
I, no, it didn't.
That's because we've got Harris check.
Right. That's the first thing I do is I run it.
So-
Must be bored in Florida.
This is great, absolutely great.
I was thinking the same thing.
I, I just-
So, you have a motion and a second to, to approve the amended minutes, right?
The amended minutes for Monday, January seventh, and Tuesday, January eighth.
Yes.
By roll call. David?
I.
Craig?
I.
Joe?
I.
Mary?
Hi.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I.
I.
Now, I, I'd like to make a point of order. I, I only voted I on the, uh, uh, January eighth, uh, Tuesday, uh, meeting, because I was not at the other one, I abstained on the one for the joint meeting.
That's a, that's a good point, but honestly-
And Alan too.
We felt you were here in spirit.
No, you're good.
You're okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Then you can vote it even if you're not.
Yeah.
Okay, are there advisory opinions?
No.
Uh, any old business?
Yes.
Craig?
Oh.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
If everybody can take one of these and pass it down. I've got two here, sorry. And you, um, I don't know if Elaine sent this to you, David?
Yeah, she did.
She did.
I was confused because I couldn't find it on the agenda.
Okay, it's, I'm just asking for your advice, the board's advice on this. This was a site plan review special permit, and you special permit issued for the, um, Harwich Port Village LLC. This is where Mad Minnow, Ten Yen, and the, uh, Biscotti place used to be.
Oh, yeah.
Buc-E's. Um, Biscotti place, oh geez, I'm tired. Anyway, um, uh, Buc-E's has, did not open last year. Mad Minnow wants to expand into the Buc-E's location. If you look at page two of three, it says, um, under conditions of approval, item number two, "Any change of use for the subject property shall require a new site plan to be submitted showing all new proposed aspects for determination of zoning compliance." Doesn't say to whom, to what entity. Does the board wanna review it? Do you wanna just let me review it? You don't need to vote, it can be just, uh, wha- whatever you all want.
Joe?
I, I think we should review it because, uh, I've, I've frequented both places. I don't see how the heck, uh, the minnow
Minnow's staying the same, minnow's not changing, I'm just saying that's the building.
Oh, I know that. I don't see how the heck the minnow can use the Asian place, uh, whatever.
No, 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 no. Tanyan is moving into where Buc-E's was. They're expanding into Buc-E's.
Over the other side, yeah, 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 yeah.
Right, which was, both of those were considered fast food restaurants under this permit.
Yeah.
Now they're going to a restaurant.
Tanyan is going to Buc-E's.
Tanyan is expanding into Buc-E's.
I understand.
So their floor area is expanding.
They're not really expanding, they gotta go around, because there's a common, there's a common
It's going bye-bye.
That wall's going away.
They're, they're, they're making two units into one big unit.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And they still ha, cannot exceed the number of seats that they have now. So seating will not change, so parking requirement will not change. But they are changing technically
Layout.
the layout, and technically the use, because it's going from the fast food, which is a special permit use, to a restaurant with, which is a use allowable by right.
And, and are you saying they could come back here, or we should, we could have them come back here?
I'm saying, condition number 2, "Any change of use for the subject property shall require a new site plan be submitted showing all new proposed aspects for determination of zoning compliance." But it doesn't specify to whom. Usually it says to the planning board, or it says to the town planner.
It should be, really, to, to the town planner, correct?
Um, I'm happy to review it if the board is comfortable with that.
I want to look at it.
I would, yeah. Do you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I will let them know that.
Do we need a motion?
Nope.
But that doesn't, that doesn't bypass, just to, just point of clarification, that doesn't bypass the role of the town planner in the process.
No.
I certainly would not want to
We'll still make comment, it's just gonna delay them for what they are trying to do.
Okay, that, that, that's a newer issue, but that's fine. Okay, I'm good with that. Any other old business, Craig?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Cindy. Did we get any feedback? Well, I see you're in the audience, the only one. Did we, or anyone, actually, any feedback from the public meeting that we held with the business people to educate and 9th, I'd like to call the meeting of the Harwich Planning Board together.
Everyone here, they know that it's now gonna be the one sign, it's just, you know, it'll be, there'll be some that we'll have to work with, Charlene and I and Ken, to just handhold and figure out some things, but it's gonna be fine.
Typical of him, the kite store guy's reaction was to close the doors and go to Florida for a month.
Well, he, he, Dr. Gravity wasn't around, so he's, he's back in March, so, but I just have one question if I can ask. I don't know, getting back to the whole Mad Minnow new restaurant concept, the people that own the Mad Minnow, and the people that own Tanyan are now a restaurant group. So, Mad Minnow stays totally how it is. The new restaurant's gonna be an Asian flair, which will be the Tanyan, but there'll also be more other things, more entrees and such, too. Charlene made a comment, the seating that existed, not just for Tanyan, the seating that existed that Buc-E's had, which was 30. So I believe the new concept will have 40 seats, or 36, something like that, whatever it is.
Yep.
Correct?
I've
Roughly.
I've been told, through you, Mr. Chairman, I've been told that the seating will not be expanded because they have fire code issues and septic issues, so they're limited to a specific number of seats.
Right, which, which I think, I believe Buc-E's had 30, if I remember correctly.
I, like I said, yeah.
And then Tanyan has whatever they have, so it'll be the combination of the two.
It would be the combination of the two, not to exceed what is already approved.
Exactly, I just want to make sure that everybody did know what was going on, because it's, it's a little strange. With, now, the board taking this on, this will, as Charlene said, kind of delay things. Will they get on to, like, the next meeting?
No.
When will the next possibility for them to be on?
Well, if they, they can apply for a waiver of site plan and do it that way, but because this was done as a special permit for the uses, et cetera, I think it triggers them having to go to full site plan, we're into March.
Okay.
When do you, when do you expect them to be on the agenda?
Right now, the filing deadline's already passed, we're into March for hearings.
Is that a problem?
Well, they want it open for the spring, you know, Memorial Day.
We'll do them in March.
Yeah.
Just was, just asking, now that Craig asked me to come up here.
Sorry, Cindy. No, I, I mean, the process isn't
I'm a little uncomfortable going
Oh, sorry.
Too deep, no, I, I'm just a little uncomfortable going too deep in, only because it's not something that we've agenda to talk about them.
Nope.
So
Just a question, in case they ask me, because I get grabbed on the streets by
Yeah, I think we've probably just gotta follow the process, right?
Yes, and I want to see it.
What'd you say, you won't see it?
I said, I want to see it, how they're gonna lay it out.
Yeah.
He wants to pick out his seat.
No, 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 no. I do frequent them, but that's a whole other story.
So Okay, so it's not, it's, it's not on this agenda, and it won't be on the next one, and
We'll do it, I, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to see what they're doing before it flows through.
Any other old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh geez, I just lost my train of thought.
Take your time.
Couldn't have been that important.
Okay, any other comments? Any, any briefings and reports by board members?
It came to me.
It did?
I'm sorry, yes, my apologies. Will the site plan that we are going to request in the hearing, will the site plan include, I'm thinking that location
It's gotta include the entire site.
Does that include the sidewalk? Because as I recall